Heard of ORCA, what does the acronym stand for? Can somebody?
I actually learned the other day after you asked me that question, that ORCA is actually not an acronym. It's what they have referred to for this COVID backlog. ORCA, and I can't make this up, is a big well. I guess they thought because this is a big problem, they would call it that. I didn't make it up, but we need those funds.
Okay, okay. And so, Mr. County Manager, Madam CFO and COO, can you speak to this funding? And what is the situation with this $2.46 million that the DA is saying she was supposed to receive? Is she going to receive it? Is there a, is there a, I mean, explain if you can, please.
And I would ask you, ask another question respectfully.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd ask that the chart that was sent by your representatives at those rates and those positions, if we are actually going to get that or if we're gonna keep going through this song and dance.
I don't know of a chart, so you're gonna have to tell us about that because I don't know about a chart. I haven't received, has anyone on this board received a chart of positions or something?
I'm sure they're aware of the chart.
Is there a chart, Mr. County Manager, that she's talking about that you can share with us?
I'm not sure exactly what chart she's referring to, but the, you know, as we presented today, the budget for the court backlog reduction is now at 75 million versus 61. So it is fully allocated in terms of the resources that we have from the American Rescue Act. So now, I guess from a, does she get it? I'll turn to Sharon, but now the process is, is that it's fully funded. The positions are allocated and she has the ability to hire. But, I mean, defer to Sharon.
Is this the sheet that you're speaking of that's coming?
Yes, Vice Chair Hall, that is the chart. These are the positions. Those were the rates of pay, we were told, that was agreed upon. As you see, it is in writing and I just want to make sure that it is honored because I did two transactions and already there were problems.
So who told you that this was approved? Because I don't see, I'm looking for the county manager, the chief financial officer and the COO, at least to be on here. And Hakeem, our Director of Finance, but I don't see any of them on here on this email. It's coming directly from Shay Alexander, who, isn't Shay still just a contractor?
Yes.
So she told you that this was approved?
Yes, we met with Mr. Adams and Ms. Alexander. We did that for months. We wrote out the positions. They met not only with my office, they met with every justice partner. We worked out the things and then we were sent that this is the list of how you are to do things. And so then we began to do things in that order. And as I told you, transaction one and two, problems already. And so those immediate, one and two, have been resolved, but I can't do that for transactions. I've heard you all today talk about hiring for different projects. And what I have to tell you is I've been hiring for the last six months and every time it is difficult. And so I want to assure that what we said was gonna be done is going to be done the way it was outlined for us.
Mr. County Manager, did you know about this document that was given to the DA and said it was approved?
Yes, ma'am. We met with the DA and discussed it with her recently. I think it was Friday.
Okay, and so it was approved then?
Well, you know, fundamentally, what the disconnect, I guess if you will, was Shay, and don't let me speak for you, where did Alton go? But Shay and Alton were working with all the justice partners to outline the plan for court backlog reduction. When this document was put together, to the best of my knowledge, and you can look at this and somewhat surmise this, these salaries are rounded numbers, 75,000, 53,000, 80,000. They are not precise numbers. So as the DA went forward to hire based on this, which was essentially a consultant working document from Shay Alexander, as it so happened, the first two that went forward did not have a good coordination with HR and an offer was made to two people that's slightly above the authorized salary grade, the higher limit of the salary grade. So we did have to get together and either do one of two things, change the offer letter back to the lower number, which I think, I don't remember Ken, exactly what the number was, but let's say $15 less, it was an absurdly small number, or change the position title to a higher title. And that was the decision that we collectively made.
And so are you currently working on moving forward with completing this list of hires?
Yes. So, and let me ask Sharon to speak to the plan that we gave to the DA that I think will facilitate not only better working, but elimination of any miscues.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Vice Chair Hall, the one thing that we, after the meeting with the district attorney, we have the HR staff reviewing the list to validate that the grades and the salary ranges all are in line with what our grades and salary ranges are and that we don't have any more issues relative to that process. We've also shared with the DA, from a procedures perspective, you know, the timeframe and the timeline for offers to be made to make sure that the offer letter itself is reviewed by HR to ensure that it has all the correct language since these are going to be time limited positions and that the title and the grade and the salary on the letter all agree to what's in the list. And so there were a few, I think, issues that needed to be corrected on the list, which HR and Shay Alexander and the finance department have been working on the last couple of days. It's not just the list for the district attorney. They're reviewing the entire list of all 300-plus positions for the backlog project in general, just to make sure that we don't have any other issues pop up like this. The DA just happened to be out in front on this. So we are trying to work through these issues and get her where she needs to be relative to continuing to move forward. The positions are staggered by month. And in addition to these positions, we also are working with the DA so that she can utilize her salary savings, that she's accrued this year to be able to hire some additional temporary positions through the end of the year to help meet part of the need that she identified in her slide.
And so Commissioner Hall, I want to say a couple of things right there. My brother in crime said, hey, they told me they were taking my salary savings. I said, they told me the same thing too, till I had the pleasure of seeing County Manager Anderson in the parking lot and told him that when I spoke to the commissioners, they all said, that wasn't right, Commissioner, from the mighty District 6. And so after I can get to you, then things change. And so I won't speak because I want the sheriff to be able to utilize some of my time and speak. And I want to make sure you know that this is the struggle that we are going through. And quite frankly, Commissioner Hall, I've told this, I don't say anything behind someone's back, I don't say to their face. And what I have told your county manager, your employee, is I don't have the bandwidth anymore for these games. I need to get to the business of solving crime. And I believe the sheriff wants to address you.
Sheriff LaBott?
I want to do everything in proper order. Let me be clear. First of all, thank you, Madam DA. And I said this repeatedly, we got the baddest DA in the country.
Yes, indeed.
So the line, I didn't just come up here to be cute. And this vest is for a reason because I had a county commissioner say that sometimes sheriffs talk big. See, I don't play one on TV. I am the sheriff of Fulton County. I'll be on the street tonight fighting crime. We started putting people on the street long before tonight, working with APD, working with Georgia State Patrol, creating a scorpion team that's gonna fight crime. We're gonna give, I told Madam DA, we're gonna fill your desk up. We're gonna fight crime and we're going after these bad guys. Some of y'all thought I was playing. I don't have a fancy PowerPoint. I will ask for permission to be on the next board meeting. Can y'all put that in whatever the 28-day cycle is? Because when I first started, I said, I learned that I had to be 40 days ahead of the conversation to even come speak to y'all. See, I'm not used to that.
What?
Let me start, let me back up and say the same thing, y'all. Thank you for coming to visit. Thank you for having the conversations. Thank you for the $6.8 million. Let me be clear, that I had to get four votes on, right? I can do the math. Only to find out later, it wasn't a pay raise, it was a salary adjustment. Let me be clear. We are underpaid and overworked. I had 15 people in the last 30 days leave the Fulton County Jail as detention officers to go work somewhere else. I text you every time I see, every time I see Sandy Springs offering $7,000 to come work for us and a $3,000 relocation fee. Cobb County offering $5,000 and a $2,000 relocation fee. It's a tough time to be in law enforcement. But each and every one of you call me when you're going up Bankhead Highway and it's nothing but ATVs blocking the street. But I can't get a betcat after I work, go through the process, Mr. Davis, thank you, I appreciate that, of playing you all's games in finance because that's all they are. Everybody wants to move the goalpost when we get to the end. It ain't your money. It's been approved here and I'm gonna spend it accordingly. And the next time, Ms. Whitmore, and I've sent you emails, I appreciate you responding eventually. And let me be clear, when I sign my name as the sheriff, which one of y'all, when you sign something on your staff, write a check, Ms. Whitmore and her team rejects? Because we just haven't done it that way. When I work a deal to get a betcat so that I don't have an MRAP breakdown on Georgia 400 on the way to a SWAT call where a guy has been charged with killing 28 people, ends up killing himself, my MRAP sitting on the side of the road. But I put a plan together, following the rules. This County Manager, I appreciate it. We have a relationship, that's what this county's not used to. We talk two, three times a week.
That's right.
We talk and I appreciate that. But what we have is a bad culture. And we need to figure out how to fix it. When I sign my, when I sign something, I was elected to do it. I'm gonna manage my budget, I promise you. But don't tell me that these salary savings I can't use to do other things proactively. When I've heard for two years, I ran for two years and what you heard was the sheriff just didn't really come to the board, he didn't talk. I would encourage you to understand this. And this is not you all's fault, let me be clear. Because as I've churned and overturned Plymouth Rock, what I found is the rock landed on you. You didn't land on Plymouth Rock. And so what you were getting was bad information. And so when I come to you and tell you that I got a canine unit, that in the middle of a search, the unit goes bad, we gotta borrow one from Clayton County because it doesn't have air conditioning. My dogs deserve better. When I tell you, and again, thank you, I appreciate the conversations around the jail. And I appreciate the passion in which the county commission has said to the city, we gotta do better. And we will, and we absolutely will. But let me tell you about the equipment. I ordered rifles the SWAT team hadn't had in years. And somewhere along the process, be it my folks, be it finance, we ordered $90,000 worth of rifles, the best equipment you can get. Oh, I'm sorry, somebody in finance said we had to send the sites out for the rifle. Let me put that, you look through a site to make sure you can hit the target downrange. But because of our processes, 30 days later, the sites are approved. And guess what? They approved by the same vendor. We have a flawed culture. It is time we fix it. And if you don't believe we out here fighting crime, come meet me in Metropolitan tonight, right? You don't believe we out here fighting crime, meet me out at Fulton Industrial. We put the necessary resources in place, but it's like pulling teeth. It is absolutely absurd. I do want to give a shout out to the county attorney and her team. The 11th Circuit ruled in our favor today. Hopefully you can give the board some update on that because it's good news about how we treat people. See, I didn't just get in here to walk around. We are going to handle our business. I am going to bring you the facts. And Commissioner Hausman, I appreciate you asking for the facts. But we are going to bring you what you need in the next board meeting, right? That will show you that we are 20 to 30 million dollars understaffed if you want to have a true sheriff's office in your county. We are partnering with all 15 cities to include colleges to get the best training we can get to give our citizens what they need and deserve. See, what I've come to learn is that you, you being plural in many instances, didn't understand the breadth and aspect of what the sheriff's office actually does on a daily basis. I appreciate the additional conversations so that we can, but now we're six months in. The education is gone and we need your help. So I wasn't privy, and I appreciate Alton and Shay in the conversations around this rescue money. But when I said I needed 50 deputies and it comes back on that chart that I'm getting 15, somebody didn't hear me. Or the allocation of funds simply was not done appropriately. I don't get it. I come from good government. And I'll tell you publicly what I've said. The city's behind, five years behind the rest of the world and the county's 10 years behind that. You don't get it because you breathe rarefied air, right? Everything you get in here from this board over, right? Outside personal meetings is, yes, Commissioner. Yes, Commissioner. This is what we'll do to fix it, Commissioner. And so we thought it, my sister and I thought it. I do it to give you what we honestly said we were gonna give you from the beginning of taking office, is the hard facts, the truth. I appreciate the time, I do indeed. I appreciate you taking my call, Commissioner Hall, every time. I appreciate Chairman, every meeting we have. No one has not been responsive to the call. It's time to vote. It's time to put the rubber on the road. It is time to invest in public safety and not just on the telephone. It is time for us to really show the citizens of Fulton County what a sheriff's officer can be, what a DA's office can be, if properly resourced. It's simple as that, it's simple as that. And so while the notion was, not notion, the facts were, we didn't get a chance to transition. But you didn't either believe in us when we said the fat meat was greasy or you wanted to give a test of time with six months in. And it is time for us to look beyond where we are. I was so happy the other day, I printed it off, I sent it to your office and I'll make sure everybody has a copy when the president said we can use this rescue money to fight crime. Let me give you an example of what this looks like. We've got the largest sheriff's office in the southeast. We use these things that we call tag readers. We mount them to cars, $17,000 apiece, right? But a whole setup. We have the sum total of one vehicle that can read tags. And it's broken down. So when I worked with Joe, Director, I'm sorry, when I worked with Director to put together the equipment I needed, we got women and men out here protecting the best we can and we're not resourcing them. You heard the DA early on, and you mentioned it, Madam Commissioner, about vests, right? I got vests that are expiring. The expiration date long gone. And maybe some of y'all thought this was a show, but I can't go to a funeral because of a vest. I refuse to. And maybe it's a culture that you just were not informed. I don't know what the answer is. But what you will get is transparency, what you will get is honesty. But we need somewhere along the lines, Mr. County Manager, the understanding that when the DA and the sheriff, we're elected just like you, right? See, some of y'all are confused, and maybe this is for the audience, because every time you say sheriff's department, the hair on the back of my neck stands up. I don't run a department, I run a sheriff's office. And it's insulting to say otherwise. So I say that to say, we're, here's the good news in all of this. We on the way up. We on the way up. We don't have, we don't have nowhere else to go but up. Let me be clear, let me be clear with my choices, right? But the DA laid it out for you. My heart breaks every time you see someone get killed in Fulton County. But let me take it a step further and I'm gonna wrap this up. I got a secondary phone. That phone is tied into 911. That 911 system goes off every night, every night. In Atlanta alone, and DA can give you the rest of the 14 cities, in Atlanta alone, somebody's either shot or stabbed, carjacked or robbed, every night.
Or trafficked.
Or trafficked, every night, every night. And we have an obligation to do better. We have, we took a duty, we took an oath to do better. And we want to be good partners in doing it. But I'm afraid sometimes you all don't get the whole story. And so we thought it necessary to come and have that conversation. And so I'm gonna get out the way of my sister.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
And I certainly appreciate it.
So Commissioner Hall, because I know you said you like receipts. See, I've been watching you all day.
Yes, ma'am.
When the DA has an Assistant Chief Clark, stand up, please, that spends 1,000-plus hours and 28 meetings to try to get an evidence facility straight, to do the architect, to work with who are supposed to be our partners, and does it along with 1,000 hours with the sheriff and also the attendance of 28 meetings. And we are guaranteed to be on this agenda for the 14th because if we don't get this facility, cases are gonna get overturned. And then no one even gives us the respect to call and say it's not on the agenda, we're not gonna deal with it. Although when I met with Commissioner Morris and Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Hausman, they all said, but you told us about this in January. Exactly. And since January, we've been doing the work. See, if my people treat any one of you like this, this is what they can each tell you, they're gonna be fired that day. I'll deal with the consequences later. So I'm asking you to get your staff together so me and my brother can stop being treated like this.
I'm so sorry because I didn't, I didn't see anything about an evidence facility on this agenda nor.
You're the one that told me.
Any, you know, I told you, I didn't, I didn't see anything. I didn't know anything about it. And so I just want to make sure we, that I get all my answers. I did hear Madam CFO say that she, that the salary savings that you have would be used, that you will be able to use them. And I just want to make sure this amount on here is correct, is $641,000 in salary savings, Madam CFO?
We calculated 617 for the salary savings.
I'll take the 617 because I was told I can't use anything.
All right, so 617 it is, going once, going twice. All right. And so we're gonna, you're gonna move forward with these positions to help the district attorney try these cases because I heard you loud and clear when you said that over 1,000 people could bond out and get back in the streets. And these are, these are serious crimes. These are not just, you know, I jaywalked, I spit on the ground, I'm loitering. These are serious crimes. And I don't want to see not one of those people get released out just because we didn't do what we needed to do financially for your office. That makes no sense whatsoever.
Commissioner Hall, I would ask with my brother that I could be on the next agenda so that the other pot that I want to deal with, because we have been strictly told that money is for COVID, and it's all right because I have enough to do with COVID, that we can ask for the other 2.5 that I referenced in the PowerPoint to deal with the rest of the cases. And so I would ask to be on your agenda.
So let me ask, Alton never came back. Well, let me ask this question, Mr. County Manager. In the COVID-19 plan that we just passed, it says that there's a court backlog, court case backlog line item, but it only is speaking to cases. Is there, can we add a line that specifically addresses these areas for the sheriff and Madam DA? And can someone confirm if we can use, whether or not we can use ARPA funds for what they're looking for? Because as I stated in the last meeting in June, reading the ARPA website information, it said specifically that President Joe Biden set aside these funds that are going to, that can be used toward law enforcement and can be used toward preventing violence and funding peace. So I would like to see that you go back and add a line for these things and let us know what can we fund through ARPA so that we can at least have something to move forward.
Commissioner Harrington?
I would love to hear Mr. Herman and Ms. Whitmore why they are here right now. I would love to know why we are here at this hour. Why are they frustrated that they, why would you tell them they can't get their salary savings? Why would you not expedite their hires? She said coming in, she's gonna get rid of 70 people and hire 130 people. We've been knowing that for nine months. So how do we get to this point where she's out trying to hire people and we're having hiccups? I want to say it's unintentional. But then when I look on the agenda and I see Commissioner Hausman talking about all week passing the lowest millage rate ever, fuck the lowest millage rate. We gotta get these people locked up. They gotta be arrested. I don't give a darn about no damn low millage rate. Where's the money that the DA's office needs? Where's the money that the sheriff's office needs? Where is the cooperation that they need? It's not even really the money. Where's the cooperation? They gotta come, they gotta spend 1,000 hours to negotiate a damn lease? And then gotta come down here and wait 10 hours to fucking speak? And y'all won't give them the money that they need? You won't cooperate with them to give them, to be able to hire the people that they need? That's preposterous, Mr. County Manager. Please make sure that this never happens again. But see, when somebody sneaks the lowest millage rate ever on the agenda,